I call this meeting of the Alexander County Board of Commissioners to order. It is March 9th, 2020. Tonight, the invocation will be led by Commissioner Ronnie Reese, and I will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. If you all would, please stand.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you today for the blessings you give us this day. Pray for your protection over our meeting tonight. God, our thoughts that we'd make wise decisions that move Alexander County forward, protect us from all the viruses, all the things that are going on all around us. And we thank you for our emergency services, our law enforcement, protect them as they protect us each day, and we'll give you the thanks for it all. Amen.
Amen. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Commissioners' report. Does anyone have anything they'd like to report on?
Do you want to do it?
No, go ahead.
Last week, Chairman Mayberry, Mr. French, county manager, myself, had the opportunity to go to Washington to the NACO conference, had some really good speakers. One of the most outstanding speakers was Colin Powell. We also had the President of the United States. President Trump was there, gave an outstanding speech. The speech concerned the relationship between counties, states, and local government, telling about the things that they had done and what was going on to support our states and our counties and the things that needed to happen. He did stress on one thing. He stressed on the trade agreement with China. And in talking about that trade agreement with China, he understood that the farmers were going to take a hit for a little while because he felt like it was very important that they understood the trade agreement and how it should be. So after everything and all the negotiations that came away and everything that came out, most of you know, you've already seen the news, the farmers came out really ahead on this, and it really helped the farmers in the United States. And he was very proud of that, and undoubtedly the entire audience was, because I don't think there was anybody sitting after he talked about those things. Very impressive meeting. Colin Powell talked about leadership and always to remember that when you're in leadership, that it's those people below you that you need to remember, and to let them understand that they're just as important to you as the people are above you, or that you're equal. Because, folks, the people that do the jobs for us each and every day, from the custodian to the CEO, they're all vitally important to this country and to the operation of businesses in the United States. And he said that one of his favorite things that he did was, he was in his office, and he said he had a really nice office, and he was real bad. He said, "I can sit there a little while," but he liked to walk outside. So he went down into the parking deck, and a gentleman that was there, I think Ryan and he said he'd been there two weeks maybe, two or three weeks, and he was parking cars. And I got a real kick out of this, but he asked if he said, "So what are you doing?" He said, "Parking cars." Said, "But, sir, why are you down here? You're not supposed to be down here with us. You're supposed to be up there." He said, "Well, I just wanted to come down and say hello to you because you're a very important part of what goes on here at the offices." And he talked to the gentleman for a few minutes, and he asked him, he says, "How do you know which car to park?" He said, "Well, it's real easy, sir. If you come in and you say, 'Good morning, how are you? It's good to see you today,' then you get to park first. But if you come in and you're grumpy and grouchy and you say ugly things to me, well, guess what? You park last, and it might take you a little while to get out of here because the parking lot's really bad." And he made that speech, and he talked about that, to make sure that people understood the importance of each and everyone's job, and how each day that you go through life, and to understand that you don't know what that person may be experiencing that day in their life. And that smile upon your face and saying something kind and caring and respectful to that person may be the greatest thing that ever happened to them that day. That may uplift them and make them be a better person for that day, and they'll carry on by saying something nice. So always remember now, when you go into these parking places and you say something, and an attendant shows you where to park your car, make sure you understand, make sure you're nice to them, because if not, you could be the last one getting out. It's very important. And we heard from several other people that talked about different things, and the Secretary of House and Urban was there, and he gave a real good speech and talked about things. We also heard from the Director of the CDC, and it was very important, and he says the same thing that everybody's been saying about the flu. Folks, it's just important that you wash your hands, don't put your fingers in your mouth, okay? Keep your hands out of your mouth, and make sure you wash those hands. And, you know, one of the ways that I was always taught to do it is sing "Happy Birthday" to yourself while you're standing there washing your hands, because it takes about 30 seconds to do that. And to be respectful and to treat this thing and to treat all these things just like it's the regular flu, because if you do the things and keep good hygiene, then, you know, we'll all be okay. We'll all be okay. And we had the opportunity to visit the White House, and Ryan and Mr. French and myself, and we went over to the White House, a very exciting experience. I had been in the West Wing before, and I had been into the other part of the White House, but never downstairs to tour the White House. If you ever get that opportunity, I think it's vitally important, that's our house, okay? That's our house. And the art, the furniture, and the history in that White House is absolutely unbelievable. And when you get the opportunity to do those things, take that opportunity and visit these places, and enjoy your opportunities that you have when you're in Washington, and you can get in to see these things. And the meeting, of course, all it was, was really, really, it was really good. Got a lot of information on the different avenues of what was going on in state and local, and what the federal government can do for us. We talked about some agriculture, the grants, how that was looking, and what we could do about getting grants for different things. And Rick and I also attended the waste meeting. And do y'all know what the number one problem with trying to get waste, rid of waste in the United States is? Do you know what causes it and what gums up the machines when they try to grind the plastic up? You use them every single day.
Plastic bags.
Plastic grocery bags. Folks, the number one thing you can do, if you want to help out a landfill, you want to help out the United States, carry you a bag to get your groceries so you can carry it back home with you. These bags gum up the grinders, and they absolutely destroy our landfills and everything. It takes forever for them to get rid of them. It's a very good meeting. We thoroughly enjoyed it. And Mr. Mayberry, Mr. Chairman, if you have anything?
Yeah, I want to just add a few things. One thing that stuck out to me, and I didn't mention this, so I didn't forget it, but if you're ever watching TV or the movies and you see the Secret Service agents on there, they're, you know, straight-faced, no motion. Well, we had several different interactions with Secret Service agents while we were there. Actually, I had to go through the checkpoint when the President came to speak, and then again, several checkpoints at the White House. And I had a great time. Those guys are, most of them are, you know, they're cut up, laugh, talk. It's not like you see in the movies. So it was very interesting meeting those guys. Colin Powell, I'll relate another story. He shared a, or his office was right beside of President Reagan's when he was the National Security Advisor, and he told a story about going in to see President Reagan, and just, he didn't even remember what the problem was when he was talking to us, but he said it was just a terrible problem. And he talked to the President for about 20 minutes, and just on and on, "What are we going to do? What are we going to do?" And the President just listened and was doing his thing. And finally, he said, "Well, you know, Colin Powell just realized that that was not President Reagan's problem. That was his problem, and he had to go figure out the solution for it." So that was one thing he said about Reagan was, he put people in positions and expected them to deliver on what those positions were. We got to hear, I wanted to mention this. So if you watch the news, whatever news you watch, wherever you get your information, and I guess we are more partisan now than we have been in the past, but we probably had 2,000 people in the room, county commissioners, county managers, from all over the United States, and the President spoke for approximately 45 minutes. So it was a long speech. There was time and time again where the entire room, Republicans and Democrats, stood up and gave him a standing ovation for what he said. He gave a great speech. It was really good. The guy beside of me was an independent county manager from Wisconsin. I talked to him quite a bit that day. And after the President spoke, there was a 10-minute break there before the Director of the CDC came. He said, "That speech has really changed how I felt about the President." He said, "I was very unsure, you know, very scared because of what I see on TV. And I can tell you, what you see on TV is not the entire picture." It just, it really shocked me at the, and do you agree, Mr. Chairman?
I was shocked, I have to be honest.
I, you know, I was completely taken aback about how he is in person as opposed to what you see on TV. So it just gives me hope that maybe we're not as partisan as it seems. We had a great time, got to, you know, it's busy. It's very busy. I know people are, you know, that are at home, or, you know, they're wanting phone calls back and things, but, you know, we're on the go pretty much most of the time. There's a lot of good information there. If you don't, you know, we usually at least try to have a couple of us go every year because of the information that comes back that we're able to bring, you know, to our county government. But one other thing I wanted to mention was, we had Senator Chris Coons and, what was the other guy's name? George Donley from Virginia. Both, both of them were Democrats. I enjoyed hearing them speak. Most of the time, Republicans and Democrats, they probably agree on 80% of the things out there. It's the 20%, the big things that cause the problems. So anyway, it was a, it was a very informative few days, so we're glad to be home, though.
Mr. Chairman, I've got just a couple of things briefly. On, I didn't get to go to Washington, D.C., but on February the 7th, I attended an Opportunity Now Workshop Summit along with Town Commissioner Jack Sims. We were there from like 9:00 to 2:00 at the Central Pea Muck Community College, talking about opportunity zones and how monies could be given to counties. So, you know, pretty much all of Alexander County is an opportunity zone, and most of Taylorsville. So we got to exchange the cards with them. And at the end of the day, President Trump spoke there, and it was really a good thing. And traffic and all the stuff there, they did a great job getting everybody in and out. Wasn't a lot of security, but, you know, I actually got to meet Dan Kowalski, he's Counselor to the Secretary of the Department of Treasury, and also Scott Turner was there. He's the Executive Director on the opportunity and revitalization for counties and towns and things. Instead of so many grants, he says, you know, you put something together that you need, email it, they look at it, and if it's approved, you know, they send monies out. This is going to be going on for like 10 years. So a lot of good things there. And locally, I attended the grand opening of Ben Bo and Martin, a law office here in town. They're actually going to be beside of Walker Insurance Agency. Luke Martin's the attorney. He's actually a resident of Alexander County. And also last week, I was able to attend the grand opening of the Lowly Inn. I think I'm saying that right. Miles and Lori Payne is the owners of that. So a lot of good things going on locally and nationally, so just wanted to make everybody aware of that. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I didn't get to meet with the President, but I got to meet with a lot of great people in Alexander County over the last month, and there's a lot of great people out there, all across the county and all areas. So we're blessed to live in a great place.
That's right.
Mr. Chairman, I had the opportunity to visit DSS and the Health Department twice in the last three weeks. Went there just to see how things were coming along on the progress of renovations, layout, atmosphere, employees', demeanor, so to speak. Two really good visits. I think we have the right captain in place to take the ship down the path it needs to go, and I'd like to commend her for the job she's done so far. Progress doesn't go as quickly as I want it to go as far as renovations, but it never does. So when touring DSS versus the Health Department, if she brings, if Ms. Wisniewicz brings the DSS Department anywhere towards looking like the Health Department, it'll be a great inviting atmosphere for the families of our county. So I'm looking forward to that, and I'd like to encourage the rest of the Commissioners to take a trip out there in the week, following week, or next two weeks or whatnot. The both departments, I think the employees there would find that encouraging, and that we are following through, and that we are going to do the job that we set forth. So I'd just like to encourage you to take that trip.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you, gentlemen. You've got the agenda before you. Is there any changes, or I hear motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. First item on the agenda is public comment, and we have three people signed up to speak. And so let me just reiterate, each speaker will have three minutes to speak. The clerk will keep the time, and if you would, just, it's your turn to speak to us. We can't answer questions and things, impromptu questions. And just please be courteous to the people in the audience. All right. First is Tammy Smith, and she's going to be speaking on homelessness in Alexander County. Is Tammy here? She is not here. Okay. Second is Craig McLeod, the Enforcement of County Ordinances and on Ridley Ranch Road.
Good evening, Commissioners and Madam Clerk. My name is Craig McLeod, and at the February meeting, I addressed the code enforcement and zoning violations and cleanup of junk cars, tires, household garbage, et cetera, on several property owners on Wrigley Ranch Road. I just came from my 110 acres over there. I've been working there today, and my wife and I are trying to do some major development over there. It's hard for us to imagine, we're trying to spend about $2 million or a little bit more developing that property with the issues and the cleanup problems down there on Wrigley Ranch. Now, I own Wrigley Ranch Road, as a matter of fact, and I'd just like to say, it would only take a county official a quick ride down there to understand the problems of Alexander County ordinance violations. My wife sent an email to the Commissioners and others in September 2019 with many follow-up emails, have been sent to the County Management Planning and Zoning and Environmental Health. These are county issues covered in all the ordinances. A new house trailer was moved in over the Christmas holiday, and people moved in within a week. Environmental Health states, "A septic permit form was given out, but no permit was ever issued. Junk and trash started appearing right away. Each time my wife and I speak with someone at permitting or environmental health, they keep reminding the McLeod's to pull a permit before starting our work." I'd like to propose to the County Commissioners, number one, to hire, finding your budget, to hire a code enforcement officer to help with your codes and ordinances. I know everybody's busy here, but perhaps, you know, a code enforcement officer like Henderson County and other counties have would help. Create a garbage disposal tax like Burke County has. The idea of paying for disposal at the location creates problems with people not disposing of their household garbage. You know, in Burke County, they charge us property taxes, and when we go to town, we live up on a mountain over there, we just, everybody just stops and transfers. But I had no idea until I spoke with Bert over at Environmental Health. I was like, "Why don't people take the trash to the..." Well, they gotta pay each time they go in. I'm like, "What? I mean, that sounds crazy to me." I mean, pulling up and paying. I had no idea. I mean, we're working over there, but we don't, we hadn't been and taken any garbage yet, but I can't imagine having to pay each time you go when you could just put it in the taxes like over in Burke County. Now, I'm from the Gulf Coast, and they pick up our garbage down there and everything, and I've worked in 33 states, and I've never had an issue like that. I mean, when we moved up to Burke County 20 years ago, you know, we just adopted it. So if you really want to make this the gem of North Carolina, let's try cleaning up the whole county, if you don't mind. I appreciate the help.
All right. Thank you, Mr. McLeod.
Thank you for your time.
Next, we have Kathy Ballard. She's going to be speaking on the Guardian Ad Lightum program.
I have two bits of information to tell you. One is, if you don't know what the Guardian Ad Lightum program is, we get the worst of the worst DSS child abuse cases, and we find out what the child wants and what is in the best interest of the child, and then we let the judge know. And currently, we are short eight volunteers in Alexander County. We're having to send volunteers up from Idledale County to take care of some of the children here. So I have brought some brochures. I've put them on that table in hopes that y'all will take some to your church or your civic organization, as you are, and just get the word out. You don't have to do very much because the right people will pick up those brochures and will give us a call. The other thing I just want to tell you is that we're going to have a small event for child abuse awareness, which is in April. It'll be April 9th, and DSS is going to be partnering with us on this, and it's going to be at the Courthouse Lawn from 12:00 to 1:30. That's April 9th. So want to invite everyone to come join us. If you're with an organization or a business and you'd like to participate, our phone number is on the back of any of those brochures. You can just give us a call, and we welcome you. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
All right. That's all for public comment. We're going to move on to item number two on the agenda, which is the Taylorsville Core Trail Proposal from the Taylorsville Business Association. And you guys have picked one person to speak then?
Yes. Thank you for allowing me to present today. My name is Meredith Laram with the Taylorsville Business Association, and we have created an interactive, accessible recreational activity that promotes healthy living and community involvement in the core of Alexander County. Do a slide change here, please. There we go. This project is called the Taylorsville Core Trail. It is a half-mile loop which will be an accessible and economical addition to our downtown area and feature our Apple Core logo, which plays on our identity as the Apple City with a fitness twist. We are proposing for the route to begin at the northeast corner of the New County Services Building. Here, we plan to have a designated start marker in front of the Community Barn Quilt Project. There will be a map of the route on the wall painted in the style of a barn quilt. We feel this is a natural starting point, given the central location, but people can enter the trail wherever they like. The Core Trail logo stencil and directional sign with the approval of the town will be spray painted on the sidewalk to indicate the direction throughout the route, including before and after each street crossing. The stencil will be approximately 10 inches in diameter, and we intend to use a high-grade spray paint and clear finish coat to apply the logo, which will last approximately five to six years. In order to make the route exactly one-half of a mile, the route will cross Second Street Southwest to the New Courthouse Park, cross First Street Southwest over to West Main Avenue, down to Emergency Street, up Main Avenue Drive, crossing to the other side of the road at South Center Street, then back up to Second Street Southwest. The red dots indicate where each route marker will be located. In all, there are 20 painted logos. In the future, we hope to host an annual core run, complete with logoed T-shirts and other accessories. We hope to create opportunities for collaboration and partner with local businesses and the county government to host community fun runs. We also have many other ideas to increase the trail's longevity and popularity in the community. We believe the Taylorsville Core Trail will be a fun downtown activity that can be enjoyed by everyone with any skill level and promote a sense of community among all who use it. Any questions?
Sounds like a great idea. Sounds good.
Thank you.
I think it's exciting, especially when you get, you know, you're putting emblem down there, having people downtown, having people walking and bring a little more, a few more folks to downtown. And with the things that are happening downtown, it's starting to pick up a little, so that'll be absolutely fantastic.
Well, thank you.
So, and the Courthouse Park, that's a Alexander County park, and I guess, you know, you need, do we need...
They're just asking you to support it or endorse it.
Okay. Have you went to the Town of Taylorsville?
Yes, we already have approval from the town.
Yeah, it sounds like a good idea, so.
Thank you.
I think it's an amazing idea. It's going to create a lot of excitement.
Do we need to endorse something for them tonight?
I just make a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we endorse this project, that the Taylorsville, is it Taylorsville Business Association? Isn't that what it is?
Yes, Taylorsville Business Association.
Taylorsville Business Association. I make a motion where you support this.
Second.
Second. All right. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. All right.
Thank you.
Good job. I'm glad to see you folks getting active and be involved, and I know that you have, and I know you've been having meetings, and I think it's great. And I think, if I'm not mistaken, this is the first actual project that you've all came out with that's actually embracing this county, the city, and the things that need to be done to let folks know you're out there and you're doing things to uplift and make things better. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Thank you very much.
I'll keep this up. I'm going.
Item number three on the agenda is the Alexander County Broadband Pilot Program Update. Alan Fitzpatrick is the CEO of Open Broadband LLC.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Fitzpatrick. How are you doing?
I'm doing well, thank you. It's good to be back. Does anyone like to see an antenna?
Yeah.
Looks good.
You want one later. There is somebody in the room, I think, that has one. Meredith, yeah. We have a customer in the room. So my name is Alan Fitzpatrick. I'm the CEO of Open Broadband. So it's good to be back, and I wanted to give you an update of where we are with the broadband pilot program. So just to start off with a little bit of a background, the pilot program started off with a $50,000 grant from Appalachian Regional Commission. The EDC put out a RFP for providers. Open Broadband was selected. We put in matching funds for the project, and then the county also put in some matching funds, so thank you very much. We hired an area manager to oversee, and that's Nicole Rolla, who's sitting in the back. And as a refresher for the pilot program, it started in June of last year and goes to May of this year. What you see on the screen now are the website signups. If anyone was curious, if people really wanted better broadband in Alexander County, this is the answer. These are unsolicited signups right off the website, and it stretches county border to county border, even in areas where there's cable. People are still interested in better broadband. So the need is pretty universal. So the current status is, we have our first tower site, and I've got pictures of it in just a minute, Lenny Mountain. We have our initial circuit that's been turned up. We started doing some marketing. Thank you very much to David and Gary at the EDC for helping us with marketing. We were at the Apple Festival. We did a radio spot. Thank you to the Taylorsville Business Association as well. Had an opportunity to talk there. We turned up our first customer... We turned up our first customers around Thanksgiving and Christmas. We had a nice article in the newspaper as well. We hired our first installer and tester in January. We now have over thirty customer activations, and we're doing about four to six new customers a week right now. And we're looking to scale that. These are pictures of our equipment on Lenny Mountain Tower. Just to give you a feel for what it looks like from more of a close-up than what you can see from the ground. In addition to the tower, we put in our first hub location. This is a poultry farm. I think it's Eric Ferguson's property on Little River Church Road. So we're using the top of the coop to basically rebroadcast the signal and serve homes around that area. Homes that were not reachable directly from the communication tower. So it's a good way to kind of get more people broadband. And it's just some pictures of our antennas. More pictures. So we like to take pictures of our customer installations. We use a variety of antennas, so you can see that not every one of these looks the same. Even the one I brought today is a little different than the ones that are there. Some antennas we use if there's not line of sight, where we have to go through trees and foliage to reach the house. Other antennas are for more line-of-sight transmission. So they can be a little bit different. Here's a map of our customer activations as of about a week ago. So we started off doing some in downtown Taylorsville, and then we kind of stretched to the northwest up along Little River Church Road. The installation process is basically a three-step process. The first thing we do is we send a person out to do a signal test. They'll bring an antenna with them. They'll make sure that there's going to be a good quality signal. They're going to get broadband speed. If it passes that, then we schedule an installer to come out and do the installation, and then we turn it up for service. The equipment that goes out there is really just these three things. There's the antenna, which goes on the outside of the house. There's a power-over-ethernet adapter, which plugs into a wall outlet. And then there's the home Wi-Fi router. So this is what gets installed at each customer's house. We are providing twenty-four-by-seven live support in North Carolina. So our call center's in Wilson. So if an Alexander County resident has an issue, so if Meredith calls, she's going to get answered by somebody in North Carolina, which we think is a real advantage to the citizens here. We also have frequently asked questions on our website. People can email us. We have a lot of different ways to support the customers. Pilot program expectations. We have a lot of people on the signup list. A lot of them are outside of the pilot areas. So we need to manage expectations of when people are going to get service. So one of the first things is, it's not a first-in, first-out scenario. Somebody could sign up and they're outside of the pilot program, or they're in a difficult-to-serve area. Somebody else signs up a month later and they're an easy installation, they actually may get service first. So it's not a first-in, first-out. Second thing is, we are going to have to put in more of these hub locations, like the poultry farm, to expand the signal and fill in some gaps. Businesses are ideal for this purpose. Generally, they're more receptive to us using them as a hub. The fastest speeds are going to be locations with line of sight to the tower. They can get the faster speeds that we've advertised. If you're not within line of sight of the tower, you still get broadband. You still get twenty-five megabit speed. But you're not going to be able to get the fifty or the hundred megabit speed. It's just the technology doesn't work unless you have line of sight. So most service outside of Taylorsville is going to be the twenty-five megabit service, just to set expectations. But that is, you know, ten to fifteen times faster than DSL. And there's no data caps. There's no overcharges. There's no throttling. It's unlimited usage. And the last point is, just to remember that this is a pilot program. We have a set amount of money, set amount of time, set amount of resources to deploy this as broadly as we can. But this is not a silver bullet that's going to give broadband to everybody in the county. Not for the pilot program. Now, it could certainly be leveraged and do a lot more with it, but the pilot program itself has a limited scope. So what happens next? Expansion to Hidden Knight and Stony Point. We had a great meeting today with Craftmasters in Hidden Knight. They're going to allow us to use their water tower, which is going to help us get into that area. We're also going out to Rocky Face. And we've spoken with the owner up at Round Top. It's going to allow us to have an antenna there and use it as a hub location. So that's really going to help us get into Rocky Face. We're also turning up fiber to the, to the tower at Lenny Mountain. We're going to be able to offer faster speeds than what we're doing already. So that's going to be good news for, for the residents. We're going to start to use Energy United poles, like the pictures you see on the right. They have agreed to allow us to use poles strategic locations, where we can basically mount an antenna and then bounce it off to the homes nearby. And of course, in May, when the pilot program finishes, we'll have a final report to the county of, you know, all of the results. Oh, we're also going to increase the pace of installations. So it's a key thing for us. We need to get more customers on the network. I don't know if any of you are on our signup list or not, but if you are, you'll notice that we're sending out newsletters every month. So we're trying to keep everybody posted as to where we are, where we're going, who's been installed, what's the coverage area, just to keep everybody informed. We're also very active on social media, so any of you are involved in Twitter or LinkedIn or Facebook, you'll see a lot of posts that we have for Alexander County there. And if you know of anyone that would like to participate in the program, we have a website link. You can go to our website and go to Alexander County, express interest in the program. We'll send out the tester, make sure we can get a good signal, and we'll get those folks turned up. And people can also call Nicole directly or email her directly. So that's where we are with the program. So I'd like to open up to questions.
Several questions. The Chicken House, Little River Church Road, is that beaming from Lenny's Mountain Tower to that? So then you could do that a lot of other places?
Absolutely.
All right. What, as you secure these other places, how does the investment in other areas work? How do other places get lit up, I guess?
So you're right, there's only a set amount of money that's available to go do these hub spots. So we try to find locations that are going to serve the most residents and put the hub locations in those areas. Each one takes some planning. We have to negotiate with the homeowner or the business owner to put a hub there and then put in the equipment to do it.
So you, you put an antenna on the top of the tower at Craftmaster, then you start shooting to homes within a five or six-mile radius from there?
Correct. So at Craftmaster, we're going to do three-hundred-and-sixty-degree coverage on that water tower, so we can go serve people basically within a few miles in every direction.
Let me ask a question. So you're...
I wasn't finished with my...
I'm sorry. I, I think this might relate to what you're saying.
Go ahead.
So the primary site that you got on Lenny's Mountain, is that going to be the only primary site you have? And it's going to be shooting to all these different hubs, like at, at the water tower? Or are you going to put another primary site up somewhere else that's going to enable more line of sight to the primary antenna?
The pilot program only had one core site, especially Lenny Mountain, but there's nothing that would prevent us in the future to have multiple core sites. We've already been talking to our fiber provider about other places that they access and potentially having the second hub. But if we do that, that's going to require extra funding to go put in additional equipment, to have another fiber source.
That's getting closer to the answer to my question. All right. So additional funding to have other places then comes in the form of private grants, public. How does that work?
Yeah, a combination of things. So we have been successful in getting a couple of the NC Great Grants, which is for Tier One designated counties, which Alexander County did not qualify for this year.
No, we're Tier Two.
Right. Next year, for the 2021 cycle, Tier Two counties are going to be considered. So that's already on our radar to apply for that for you guys next year. You're not eligible this year. Certainly, additional grants from ADC would be appreciated. Other than that, it's going to be whatever money Open Broadband and the county have to try to expand this further. In some counties, we've done partnerships with the county, and Franklin County is one example. We have a four-year program with them to basically do two sectors of the county each year. And over the course of four years, we've basically broken down the county into eight sectors and did the whole thing.
So if I understand this right, you're using the base fiber optic line to run up to this main portal, correct? So if you put up another portal, you would have to have fiber run into it, is that correct?
That's right.
Okay. All right. Now, the other question is, I was in a meeting several weeks ago, and they're talking about, they're, they're going, it's a state association commissioners meeting, and they're going to put up like ten satellites, I understand. It's supposed to help across the United States with broadband. How is that going to affect you? Will that play in with you? Because they're supposed to launch those things in Florida soon. How will that play into you? Because I know enough about it to be dangerous. That's the information that we got, okay? So I know it's a dangerous question because I, I, I don't know yet because they haven't given us everything yet.
Sure. So Elon Musk, who runs Tesla, is known for coming up with Starlink, which is the low-earth satellite. I think that's terrific. I think that if you can get internet to more people that are in remote areas, that's great. The one thing that we found in our business is the amount of attention that the user needs. And we get phone calls like, can you come over and set up my smart TV? Can you hook up my phone? My printer's offline. I have the service. I got Wi-Fi. Can you help me with that? I don't know how a satellite company will handle that. They're going to have to have feet on the street. You're going to have to have local people that can go to somebody's house and talk to them on the phone. So that's what we do. We, the people that we've hired actually go to your house. The people who are answering the phone live in North Carolina. I'm not saying a satellite won't work. Technically, it should. But I think the customer support angle is going to be more difficult for them.
If we run a water line somewhere, we, we install the water line, pay for it, and then, and then we get customers and we pay for the water line that way. I, I don't guess the internet business works that way, where you build the infrastructure and then recoup your money off of your services?
That is how it works. We're a small company. We don't have much money. So if you're expecting us to just throw out millions of dollars, we don't have it. Yeah.
Yeah. I, I will throw something in on that. I know there's a lot of counties right now that are building towers, and then they're selling spots off that tower to get people to come in and put the transmitters on them in order to have internet to the, to the people in the, in the county, especially in the mountains and some of your other counties in remote areas. And the counties actually build the tower and then sell that off that, and that's how they get the revenue to help continue to do that. A lot of counties are doing that, from what I've been hearing, because it's one of the things that the state was pushing, was through the private-public sector to get something to happen, to get more, to get more places out there where you could actually put the transmitter for the, the internet. And I know there's a lot of talking that's still working. There's going to be some probably grant money on that, probably within the next, whenever the state decides to do another budget. That's all up to then. We never can tell what they're going to do. But I know those are things that they've looked at on the private-public sector.
I have a question. On the pilot program, when are you expecting the monies to run out on that? And what's the projections on how many customers at that point?
We're projected to go through May of this year. The average that I always will tell people is, expect eleven hundred dollars per customer. If you were to talk to Jeff Searle, who runs the State Broadband Office, and he looked at all of the state grant applications for last year, and it came out to about eleven hundred dollars per new user to build a brand-new network from scratch, get people turned up. So this particular pilot program has a fifty thousand dollar grant. We're matching it with fifty thousand of our own, and the county's putting in another thirty-seven-ish... Say another fifty. We'll round up, a hundred and fifty. So if you do the math, you should expect, you know, a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty customers to come out of this. Now, we'll obviously turn up as many people as we can. But every customer takes about three-hundred-and-fifty dollars of equipment just for the premise. So you turn up a hundred customers, and that's thirty-five thousand dollars just for that equipment. So it, it is an expensive business.
Anything else?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
One thing we've been made aware of is that there's going to be Golden Leaf Funds that'll be available later this year for this very type of thing. So that's something that we want to talk to you about and work on.
Specifically for broadband?
Well, it's for economic development projects, and this would certainly fit into that.
I have another question. Meredith, do you mind if I ask you a question? Are you satisfied with the service?
Yes, I am. I've only had it for about a week, but so far, it's been really fast and I've been very satisfied.
And where you're located, I know where you live, so do you have Charter through there?
I think so, yeah.
Think so? Thanks. Just curious.
And, and the reason...
We didn't talk out of time either.
The reason we even started looking at this was not only just to get internet service to households who can't get it right now, but also with so many people working from home, real estate agents, whoever, they're, they're working from home, we're going to have to invest more in the future in getting more broadband service out to the county. Because, you know, your big cable companies, they don't care to run more line. They're not going to be burying more cable. When you get out to the rural areas, it, it costs them so much per mile, and there's not enough houses, and they're just not interested. So we've got to come up with different solutions to the problems.
So I think one of you were alluding to, customer revenue should really drive a lot of this. And the more we can sign up some of the larger accounts, like we were talking to Craftmaster today, and they sounded interested in buying our service. So accounts like that will really go a long ways to kind of helping justify things. It's really difficult. It's probably the reason why the big ISPs haven't done it yet, is it's hard to really make a good business case when you're selling service for forty dollars a month. Takes a lot of people to try to offset the cost. But larger accounts can help pay the bills. So the more customers we can get, the larger customers we can get, the more profitable this becomes. It gives us more money to expand, and the whole thing is just a continuous loop in the right direction.
And then, like, the Craftmaster Tower, for instance, or the Lenny, any of them, does it have a capacity on how many services you can run off of that? So I guess you, you maximize, you have so many, and you want to get all of those, obviously, to make it efficient financially. But is that a big number, or?
So, great question. Is it each antenna, like this one, could do like thirty customers simultaneously? So then the question is, what happens when you fill it up? Well, you add another antenna. And then you start to break down your three-hundred-and-sixty degrees into little pie slices. So you keep adding antennas. You basically will not run out of capacity. A great thing about fixed wireless technology is it is more scalable. We don't have to, like, bury fiber in rural areas. It doesn't make sense. We can just put up antennas at the homes that sign up. And that's where the capital investment is. If somebody doesn't sign up, there's not money spent there. So to me, it's the only scalable way of reaching rural America with broadband. Because we've liked to do fiber ourselves. I like fiber. I would love to run fiber. I just can't cautiously buy it. I don't actually blame AT&amp;T or Charter for not running fiber because they just can't justify it. You have to go with a different technology.
Well, since we started talking about this, what, three or four years ago, I've learned a lot about broadband and signals and fiber and a lot of things I didn't know before. So it's, it's very interesting and what you're, what you're capable of doing now that couldn't be done ten years ago.
Technology's come a long ways.
Yeah.
And I do have to give you guys a compliment. Alexander County is one of our favorite counties to work with in the state.
Well, you've got some of the best people in the world. Come on. All these people in this county are just really good people, I'm telling you. Just like Jess said earlier. My question though is this. You talked about mounting these, these, these transmitters on top of... My question though is this, you talked about mountain, these transmitters on top of the water tower and up on Lenny's Mountain. What other points in Alexander County, in terms of the higher peaks, have you looked at that would be suitable to fire the signal from?
Round Top is one of the ones we're gonna go to next.
But other than that? You haven't looked at any others yet?
There was another one Greg Kronk took us to, I can't remember the name of it. I don't know if David, if you remember that one or not.
You may have went to Barrett's?
Barrett's, I think it was, yeah.
Okay.
So you're in a very fortunate position. If you guys remember from the original broadband study, there are a lot of towers in the county. There's a lot of good locations. Just every one of them is gonna require, you know, thirty to forty thousand dollars worth of equipment and tower climbers to get up. So if you want to do a dozen of them, you do the math, and you're quickly at a half million dollars.
One question, so you were talking about Lenny's Mountain. If you're in line and you can see that mountain, then that person could be an available customer to get service?
Absolutely, and even if you can't see it, there's a chance that our non-line-of-sight technology can still reach you. So we have, non-line-of-sight means it goes through trees. We can't go through dirt with the wireless signal, so you're like, you know, over the hill and down the valley, we can't reach you. But if it's just a matter of trees, oftentimes we can shoot through the trees and serve a customer.
Okay, thank you.
I would be interested to see, once you get this, everything done, get as many as you can get out there. I'd really be interested to see if you would do a poll of the people that have it, to see what their opinion is on it, do the monkey, what do you call it?
Survey monkey.
Yeah, monkey survey, thank you. Do the monkey survey, because that's all I could think of, was the monkey survey. But anyway, could do a monkey survey and take a look at that, and see what kind of feedback that we get, so that we'd understand where we're at, where we need to go, and what, if any, improvements that we'd need to make.
That's a great idea.
That'd be very good, that'd give us a lot of good information, I think. And I would hope that the people of Alexander County would do the survey and get it back to us so that we can help other people and see which route we need to take to make sure we do the right thing for the people.
Sure, I'll take that as an action item.
Thank you very much, sir.
One last question, you've been great too, so I hope you don't feel like you're being grilled, you just have all the answers. So, at any of those towers that we have now that's functioning, there are hundreds of houses, so how do we, how do you determine, I mean, who gets the service, I guess?
So we start with who signed up. Right now, we have such a backlog, we have almost a thousand people in the backlog. So we don't have to like go out and necessarily advertise to get more people to sign up. We need to serve the people that have already signed up. So we start with people that we know have a good line of sight, they're fairly close to one of those locations. We send out our tester. So she goes out with one of these antennas, and she sits at the house, and she figures out where in the house it's gotta be pointed, and where it's gonna mount. It talks to the homeowner, because some homeowners are a little picky about where these things are, rightfully so. And then once they basically confirm there's a good signal, we hand it off to our installer who comes in and does it.
One more question. In relation to that, this is, you know, me thinking what would be best for a citizen. Could you not differentiate and tell who has access to some type of internet besides just a dial-up or DSL, and then start there, instead of putting it to someone's house that actually has access to Charter or U-verse?
That's an excellent question. Do we start to deprioritize people on the signup list that have access to other technology? Is essentially the question, right?
Well, that's the reason we're doing broadband.
To reach the underserved.
To me, it's only fitting to do such, but that's why I'm asking the question.
It could be done, sometimes it might be difficult for us to determine if there's another option there, other than like your question, asking if cable wasn't down the street. For us, in order to make the project as successful as possible, we need more revenue. So we need those customers paying the bills, so we don't have to come and ask for a government check. If we can get revenue from somebody, we want to get revenue from somebody, even if they already have access.
The way I'm looking at it, you know, forgive me, but if you've got a thousand backlog, I'd say, you know, there's a high percentage of folks within that thousand that doesn't have access to anything besides dial-up or DSL, which is garbage. So, you know, when they signed up, did they do some type of signup and say, hey, I've got access or I don't have access to some type of internet?
We have not asked that, that's a good question, though. That's not part of our signup form, but that is something we could add. That would tell us, that's a good observation.
It'd be inexpensive to be told that.
Be real easy, yeah.
And those people would be very willing to pay your forty dollars a month and three hundred dollars worth of whatever, you know, to get service, I'm sure.
So then the question is, can we reach them from the tower sites that we have? As you saw from the map earlier, people have signed up all over the county. So somebody could sign up, you know, fifteen miles from the tower. And it's like, I'm sorry, but you're not gonna get turned up during the pilot program. We're just not gonna be able to do it.
Okay, so if you wanted to put some free internet service out there to folks, say in a rural community, okay? I'm gonna pick on the school system here, okay? I'm gonna go after him right here, I'm kidding. But what if, what if you were able to fire a signal from Lenny's Mountain to a school bus, or a direct shot where that person parked that school bus in their yard? Okay? And it had a transmitter on that bus to where it could transmit the signal out, for people to have access to the internet, to give more people that service?
Absolutely, that could be done.
Is that not possible? Then we could hit more rural areas?
Yes, one of the things we like to do is offer public wifi zones.
That's what I'm speaking of, right here.
Because it does help solve the digital divide, it gives people access, you don't have to sit at McDonald's and get on wifi. We would love to put up more wifi zones. So we've done it in various towns across North Carolina, we've done it in parks. Haven't done it on a school bus, but we could.
Right, but I mean, it's just something to look at, because that school bus, especially during school use, where there's students, that school bus is going to be sitting there in that driveway, at some of these people's houses. I don't know how many of them go home, how many of them don't. But if it was sitting there, and that receiver was on there and is able to transmit the signal out to the people in that community, that'd be a way for them to get wifi service.
It sure would be, right, we would love to do that.
That's just something to look at, okay? I mean, that's the reason I was asking the question, because I know some school buses, I mean, I don't know where they park them, well, it may be all at schools now, I don't know. But it may be something that, in a relationship with the county, the schools, that we could do to have it there for those folks to have the service. That's where I'm coming from.
And I left off, one of the other reasons that we started this was, you know, for kids to have access to wifi to do homework after school. So that was another reason, I just didn't mention that one, so.
And we can shoot wifi off of building rooftops as well. So if there's county properties, that maybe you want to have a wifi zone outside, we could put antennas on the roof and just point it to the parking lot.
Right, which would help a lot more people to get the signal that need it.
Yeah, we're a big fan of wifi zones.
Okay.
To our parks. Send it to our parks.
Get people in there?
East Park?
Bethlehem?
Well, Bethlehem's probably too far away right now, but right now, East Park, Old Town Park.
Roadhouse Lot.
One other organization that can be very useful are churches. So Nicole just kind of refreshed my memory on that. We have put antennas in church steeples before. I mean, not on the outside where it's real, you know, visible. But a lot of times, church steeples will have like a glassed-in area. We can put the antenna inside the glass and shoot right through it, and it works quite well. So we're actually talking to several churches now about being hub sites for us.
And that'd be good, because I think the more accessibility to, for people in the county to use it in a public area, and I don't know what the cost would that would be, I know it's a cost involved, but at the same time, I think it would give, especially those people that don't have an accessibility to wifi. Once we get through the pilot program, things to look at, okay? Once we get through the pilot program, things to look at.
And that would reach more people with less cost per person to do a wifi zone. Because the way we're doing it now, we have to spend all the costs on each home.
Right.
Whereas if you do a wifi zone, that could reach a hundred people or two hundred people for not that much of an investment.
Right, okay, thank you.
Thanks for your time.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, item number four on the agenda is the Alexander County February 2020 flooding update. And Doug Gillespie, our Director of Public Services, is gonna come speak.
Thank you for letting me come up here and speak. I just wanted to give you a little bit of reference on the flooding issue that we had on February 6th, 2020. In just a few hours, Alexander County was hit with a little less than five inches of water and rain, according to the national weather, at the Lower Little River section itself. During this time, we had approximately about ten roads closed that were eventually opened up within approximately about five hours, so we didn't have to worry about the long-term problems that we have on the last flooding itself. We did have two swiftwater rescues that we have. You'll see some pictures of those here throughout. One gentleman decided to go out on his four-wheeler, carrying his trailer, and got stuck on the bridge. Our emergency management and Fire Marshal's Office responded out along with Alexander Rescue and Bethlehem Volunteer Fire Department and Rescue to help extract this gentleman from the area. We also had Hidnite Family Campground that we had to initially extract twenty-five people out of, and I think it got more closer to fifteen to twenty people. First time, I think, we set up in a shelter in a while, is that not correct, Ms. Wissner? We did set up a shelter for these people here at the Hidnite Family Campground. It initially started out about twenty to twenty-five people. We had a couple that decided they didn't want to go out, and we let the Sheriff's Department talk to them and give them their rules and regulations, I guess is what you would say. And then we only had, after it was all over with, we only had three that showed up at the shelter. So we did set up a short-term shelter, and we let them work with the American Red Cross, and we got those three people a hotel room in states, well, through the American Red Cross at no charge, and they did get some meal vouchers and stuff with that. But with the shelter set up, that is the first time, like I said, in Alexander County. It was my very first time, and we'd like to thank a lot of people here, but some of the people we want to thank is, of course, Alexander County Sheriff's Department, the Health Department for setting up, helped setting up the shelter, I know Ms. Walker was there, Alexander County EMS, Alexander County Inspections, the Department of Social Services, our Alexander County's Community Emergency Response Team responded also, Tethersville Police Department, the American Red Cross, and then, of course, all the volunteer agencies throughout the county itself. We did also have two animal rescues. One was rescued before personnel got on the scene, and we did save approximately about four houses, or four horses, from getting drowned in the area also. And then I also want to thank my employees at our office, we did pull some extra hours that day. We did set up an emergency operations center, and we did have a declaration of emergency declared at that time, along with the town of Tethersville itself. So we did have some time. And I found out today and yesterday that they are going to possibly get some FEMA money. I know our, the damage that we've looked at was not that much, but the Department of Transportation had over fourteen million dollars worth of damage. And that's what we could possibly piggyback on at that time to actually help with that. Is there any questions?
Appreciate your great work.
Yes, please.
We did have a restructure in our office, and I wanted to bring all the guy, or the people here that are actually, I got promoted to Public Service Director, which I'm over EMS, Emergency Management, and the Fire Marshal's Office. And I'll let the other ones come in here. Mark Earl was promoted to Fire Marshal. He's a little shy sometimes.
Why, I have any slipper, sorry, bang, slide.
Sometimes have to have a donut, and it sort of leads you in this way. Mark Earl was promoted to the Fire Marshal and Deputy Emergency Management Coordinator. Garrett Huffman, from Longview Fire Department, was Assistant Chief and a longtime fireman at Hickory Fire Department, and a citizen of Alexander County. Or, excuse me, he grew up in Alexander County, and he's working on getting back here. Is our emergency manager now, and Deputy Fire Marshal. And we've got Mark Howell as our emergency planner, and he is also working with the bioterrorism coordinator and public health with the Health Department and stuff. So we wanted to introduce y'all to the new employees also.
Glad to have you.
Appreciate you.
Absolutely.
We thank you for your time.
Thank you, gentlemen, thank you very much, good job.
All right, item number five on the agenda is the North Carolina Health Insurance Risk Pool and Resolution authorizing the participation in the North Carolina Health Insurance Pool. Rick Fritsch, County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your package, you have some information. Part of that you have is something we need you to consider and approve tonight, if you so see fit. This is a resolution authorizing the participation. The N chip, as it's called, is a way to, for us to keep our Blue Cross insurance in the upcoming fiscal year. As the information states, this will give us more stable and predictable cost. It will give us lower administrative costs, and it actually gives us a little buying power. What this does, we're, would be in a pool with several counties. Catope County is one of those counties that's participating in several larger towns. They'll only take municipalities or counties that are a hundred employees or more. This will enable our Blue Cross that we currently have rates to only increase three percent, but we also have better deductibles by joining the N chip. In the past, and I can't remember a time when we've been able to keep basically the same insurance plan for two consecutive years. This will enable us to do that, which will be a better insurance coverage for our county employees. And so I'm not sure what questions you may have, but I'm recommending that we go in this direction. We're asking you to consider adopting the resolution tonight, and I'll be glad to try to answer any questions, Mr. Chairman, that members may have, or yourself.
I'll just make a comment. Our health insurance costs have went up drastically over the past several years, five or six years. It's nice to see a three, only a three percent increase, I mean, that's just unbelievable. But I will say one thing, and I, we have to do what's best for the county taxpayer, but the cost savings that we're getting here is gonna be pushed off to small businesses and individuals that buy their own health insurance. That's why health insurance, you know, is so screwed up. The big, big companies, the big employers, they're able to get the huge discounts, and those are passed off. So, just a complaint, but anyway, it is what it is.
Three percent would be the lowest increase we've had-
Yes.
-in years.
Mr. French?
Yes, sir.
You know, we always try to be aware of things, and sometimes you say, well, that's just too good to be true. Where's the, where's the catch or the risk involved here? Because this really is amazing opportunities, I mean, there's gotta be something.
Well, there is, but the risk is, and the costs for the counties are, it costs us to cover, the charge is seventeen fifty per employee per month, which is about fifty-two hundred dollars a month. Those costs are built into the rates. I think the appeal is that they're only dealing with counties and cities. And this has been in effect a couple of years, this is just for one year. So if we don't like it, we want to get out of it, we can. You can have any health insurance plan you want with Blue Cross. So if it gets, if we do well in their next fiscal year, and we don't spend the money that's appropriated for it, then that money could be, I'll say, basically, we could have better rates, or we could have better coverage for our employees. That's what we have, we have, I guess, negotiating power through all the employees that are participating.
So the price is factored into the rate that we're already dealing?
It is. Our rates only increased three percent. The current Blue Cross carrier that we have actually predicted that our rates would increase seven percent. So it's actually a four percent savings, if you want to look at it that way. But we've had rate increases in the past where it's been over twenty percent, and we've had to basically just reduce and gut our insurance, or change insurance. So this will enable us to stay with Blue Cross. And again, they only cover Blue Cross. So I think, I would recommend that you approve the resolution tonight, so we can move forward with it. It's a good deal for us.
Question, how does this affect the premium that the-
How does this affect the premium that the employee pays?
The premiums go up 3%.
So, so the employee is actually the one that's going to handle the 3%?
No, we, the county pays that.
Okay.
That's how we've done it in years past.
Is that just for the employee or the whole family?
Well, that's for overall, what the co, the 3% it covers.
Okay. And we can get out of this in a year if.
If we don't like it, yes, sir. We also get to have a member on their board, and that's just, that's just a small thing.
So, this will be the exact same insurance that Catawba County employees have?
No, this will be the same exact insurance Alexander County employees had, have right now.
Okay.
Except if it's be, it'll cost us 3% more, but we'll have better deductibles.
The reason I'm, I'm asking those questions is I've heard several complaints from employees from Catawba County about their health insurance. That's why I was asking the question.
Right. Well, the main thing that we're, one of the main things we're looking at is stability and being able to predict costs. Predictable costs, they'll, they have told us ranges from 2% to 5%. So, if we can get a 2% to 5% range on our health insurance costs and stay pretty much with the same plan, it's good for everybody.
Yeah, I'd agree. Anytime you can keep your health insurance to that minimum. And these people, that's what they do.
Yes.
They know about insurance. They know their contacts, so.
They, you know, they're, they're representing us. They're managing our programs for us, our insurance programs, health insurance programs for us.
And with the county, I know, I think it's been changing a lot, just in the last, about every year.
It's, it's really been altered, just to be honest.
And I think a lot of our employees, and, you know, I think they'd like to keep some stability, so I think, I think it'd be a good thing.
Yeah, mathematically speaking, three beats 20 every day. And, you know, sometimes, if you have a big increase in your, in your premium that people are faced with, then, you know, they actually go negative on income, so.
Well, and what, what we've done in the past, you know, right, right or wrong, is that we, then you have to adjust the insurance. You have to do things, you know, look at the insurance rates, and, and the employee could end up with insurance coverage that's not as strong. So, this, again, will enable us to keep pretty much the same coverage that we currently have, but actually improve it with deductibles.
Who put this, who's been working on this for us?
I have, and Ms. Turnmeyer and Ms. Stein in HR.
Good work.
Yeah, what, what you mentioned, Mr. Peel. One of the reasons that wages are, one, yeah, one of the reasons, not the complete reason, but one of the reasons wages has kind of stagnated until recently was that businesses had to pay so much more for insurance premiums that they couldn't do it in raises to employees, so. That was one of the reasons behind that. I will make a motion that we approve the resolution authorizing the participation in the North Carolina Health Insurance Pool.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Item number six on the agenda is Budget Ordinance Amendments, number 38 through 43, and calling Rick French, County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Budget Amendment Number 38 is to increase the detention center budget for the county share of juvenile detention costs. It's a 50/50 split in the state. There have been more juveniles and more days per person served in juvenile detention than what the county has experienced in prior years. A new expense line item has been created to account for the juvenile detention invoices separately from the Safekeeper invoices, which is another program. The county pays for adult inmates and must be housed in a state detention facility. That's Budget Amendment 38. 39 is to increase corporate extension budget for shared participation with Wilkes County and Caldwell County in the Visit NC Farms app. The app is designed to connect tourists with local farms, farmers' markets, and agricultural events. Counties charge a $50 annual fee per member for, to participate, to participate in farms and locations to be included in the app. That's Budget Amendment Number 39. Number 40 is to increase DSS budget for additional social services block grant funding for adult protective services and to purchase and install one, one set of automatic doors for the DSS building entrance. Number 41 is to increase the library budget for donations received. Number 42 is to adjust the Bethlehem Sewer Fund budget for fiscal year 2020 sewer rate schedule based on data from year to year, year-to-date revenue. That's just the increase in revenue that we received, reports from the City of Hickory. Number, Budget Amendment Number 43 is to budget for the close, closeout of the Alexander County Office Complex Renovation Project, the Services Center, and transfer of the remaining cash balance of local funds back to the General Fund. I'll be glad to try to answer any questions, Mr. Chairman.
If you want to have any questions.
Mr. French, in number 38.
Yes, sir.
What is inmate phone service revenue?
It's funds they pay using the phone they're charged with.
Mr. French, number 40, Budget Ordinance Amendment. The set of automatic doors, will that be on the front of the building?
Yes, sir.
They're not automatic?
No. No, they're not. They'll be similar to the Health Department.
Okay, thank you.
I guess that's to keep people from, be, well, so they can lock the doors easier and keep people from touching the handles and spreading germs and everything else? Okay.
Is it handicap?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else? Is there a motion?
Move to approve the budget amendments as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Item number seven on the agenda is Board Appointments and Reappointments. Calling Rick French, County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Adult Care and Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee reappoint Glenn Dale Jr. and Carol Biggs for three years.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
I'll second it. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Item number eight on the agenda is County Manager's Report.
Couple of things just to mention. One is that we have a sewer pre-construction meeting on March 16th. Also, the, Alexander County has received a notice that bids on the Sunny Point Elementary School Sewer Project will be opened on March 13th. So, things are moving along with those two areas. And just to give you an update, the Ridley Ranch Road complaint or concern that was voiced earlier, we met with the families, staff met with the families, and talked with them. Two staff have actually gone out to the site and looked at the property, and they're, we're trying, they're trying to make progress on cleaning the sites up. And John Pilkington, who's been involved in that, he has not been in the office very much. His mom was in hospice and then recently passed away this past weekend, so we're, we're moving on it, so I just want to update you on those things. And I have some things for closed session. Also, there was a discussion about appointing a Commissioner Task Force on Drug and Addiction. I think, Mr. Peel, you want to?
Yes, actually, when, when I first moved to Alexander County, it was one of the first things that I served on. LeAnn was on that, Billy was on it, Marissa and Jennifer were both on it, and they're, they left, but it was a group of people that, it started out as, LeAnn, you may have to help me, but we started out as Commissioner's Task Force on Drug Abuse, but then it was drug and alcohol, then it was addictive behaviors, and it morphed into a lot of things, but a lot of good came out of that group because there were so many people from so many different areas that would come together to address the issues. LeAnn was very good at some grants and was able to feed everybody. I think that might be one of the reasons people came, because we, we had a nice lunch every time, but it was a very good and very productive group that I think could benefit us now because of the problems that we have with drugs and addictive behaviors and, throughout our citizens. So, that, I, I thought that would be a very productive thing if we could establish something that was similar to that old group that we had so many years ago.
Mr. Peel, I'll step in there and say that, that the group was appointed because of a trip that we made to Washington DC in the opioid time, at that time when, I believe it was North Dakota and South Dakota, and we came back, and if I'm not mistaken, Nurse Keever and I, a couple more, got that board appointed. We started that thing, we met right here.
Yep, you were on.
And we did that thing for a long time and kept it going, and then it sort of just dissolved somehow. But it should be one of those boards that needs to be active and going, and we just need to reactivate that board and get it going. It was a good program at the time because, I know Montana was the number one state in the country that had opioid addiction at that time, and the NACO was extremely involved in that, trying to get things done so that we could stop some of this opioid abuse that was going on in the country, and that's how that got started. And it was a very good board, and I know that myself and Commissioner Keever and I did that when we came back from NACO and got that board started. I think it'd be good to reactivate that board.
One other thing that, so do you want us to start, will you start submitting members to Ms. Starnes, so we can appoint it at the next meeting, or start?
I think so. That's my opinion.
Is that okay with Commissioner, all Commissioners?
I don't have a problem with this. Really good board, and it was going good, and then I, I don't know whatever happened and why, sort of just, I think, maybe the interest just went away and people stopped coming.
Okay.
I make a motion that we investigate establishing a, or task force, whatever you want to call it, that focuses on these addictive behaviors that cause us so many problems.
I think we ought to have a clear mission statement on that, what that board is for as well, if we could do that. I'm good with that.
Why don't you appoint the board and let the board bring, come up with their own mission statement? That way, you'd have more time to think about and have more contribution from the members that are in there to look and see what needs to be done, because I think when you do these things, I think you need to look at alcoholism, you need to look at the opioid addiction, and all those things that cause these problems, like with counter, drug abuse, all those things that, that need to be looked at, that causes people and families to lose so much money and lose their loved ones because of these addictions. And as everybody knows, we already have that lawsuit that's been filed, excuse me, by the counties in North Carolina against these opioid companies that have manufactured this product, and we're still waiting on resolution from that, and it's still in the, still in the court system. But I, I think that would be a better way to do it, and let it come up with.
Sounds reasonable to me.
And I certainly volunteer if no one else, you know, ever how that works, but.
If it's your idea, that means.
You're it.
You're it.
I think, I think we should just reestablish the board that was there before, because you already had the mission statement and everything, it was very good. I just think reestablishing that board would be really good, and just, you know, activate it just like we do anything else, and just go for it. I mean, you know, and, and that's what we need to do, because what we're talking about is the exact same thing, and this comes from the continued, and the state, the, the NACO, not NACO, but our North Carolina Association of County Commissioners are still fighting hard on this opioid and drug addiction, and there's a lot of information out there that we can get from them that, that would help us, and all through the public health system of the state of North Carolina. And, you know, we just need to make sure we keep it going and help these people that need assistance.
So, the motion is to investigate it? That's what you want us to do, get information and bring it back to you, or?
Well, why don't we just let you and Commissioner Peel investigate it at our next meeting? You bring to us what our finding is, and then let us go from there.
And, and bring names to, to restart the board with, to place on the board.
Okay.
Because there's a lot of good people that was on there. The sheriff.
Health Department.
That's what I'm saying. LeAnn was on there. Had a lot of good people on there. Lot of good people.
The other, the last thing I want to mention is that on your, the, under other business, we have ABC requests, and that's being tabled until April. And I have some things for closed session, but that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Consent Agenda? Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve Consent Agenda, stay.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. We will now transition, how should we do this? Yeah, so we will now transition from the Board of County Commissioners meeting part to the Consolidated Human Services Board meeting. And... Let's see here. Where's my stuff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did want to mention, I was asked by Jesse Smathers, our VA representative. He wasn't able to attend, and asked that I mention a public free event, so people would know about it. It is March the 25th at 6:00 PM. It is a free viewing of the movie documentary Suicide: The Ripple Effect. The film is meant to save lives. It's a documentary of Kevin Hines' story. At age 19, he attempted to take his life by jumping off the Golden Gate Bridge. Since, he has used the rest of his life to try to educate and save lives, so I hope everyone will take advantage. We've had several viewings on different topics that have went over very well, just to, to get the word out to the community and educate so that we recognize people that are in need and needing help. Again, that's March 25th, 6:00 PM, at the high school auditorium.
LeAnn, can I say something? I'm sorry, I apologize.
No, no, certainly.
I was at a mental health meeting and listened to his, basically his testimony and his story, and it was very moving, and I'm sure the movie is, is very good, and those folks that have seen it claim it's very, very informational and will really touch you about the suicide prevention and things that we can do to help people deal with problems and issues. But he jumped off the Golden Gate Bridge, and one of the few that lived to tell about it, so. It's a heck of a story, and if there's any way you can make it, it'd be great to attend, I would encourage it. I'm sorry, thank you.
We hope, we hope we have a good turnout, because we have certainly seen an increase in suicides in our county, and we certainly are monitoring that as well as lots of other addictive behaviors and mental illness, so, you know, lots of times we, you know, things happen in your life that you can't control, and it's difficult to deal with that. So, sometimes, family and friends and neighbors need to, to recognize some of those signs and symptoms before it's too late. So, again, March 25th, we hope you come out. I'm just going to intro into, the Health Department's going to go first. We always do public comment, but I don't have anybody signed up, so we'll go straight into, I thought you're, you really wanted to hear about COVID-19, so.
Billy Walker, our Assistant Health Director.
I'm here to discuss the coronavirus, which is COVID-19, and I'm sure it's on everybody's mind, so if you don't hear anything else I say tonight, hear the words "Don't Panic." So, coronavirus, it started in Wuhan, China, and actually, I think what people aren't hearing and what they're not saying is that coronavirus has been around as, it can be found in animals, but it, it also can be found in a common cold. And so, this is just a strand that has presented, and it's stronger, it's a, goes straight to the respiratory system, and it's, it's causing death mainly in your elder population or people who are immune compromised or already have health issues. It says, and my slides have changed, I apologize, this, the numbers change daily, but we had to put this in last week, so I'm going to give you updated numbers as far as four o'clock today is, is the most recent that I could pull. Of course, those top numbers are not correct, but if you look at where it says CDC cases in the US, that's the ones I think you are more, want more information about. So, instead of 43 last Monday, today it's 423. And then, total deaths, instead of two, it's 19. today it's 423. And then total deaths, instead of two, it's 19. And then states reporting was 10, and now there's 35 states reporting. The 19 deaths, there was a nursing home in Washington State. And it did say 10 people had died just in that nursing home. But when I looked earlier, it said 18 had died. So that's all but one of the cases that's, that's died, come from that nursing home. And of course, they're in closed settings, they are immunocompromised, and their underlying health conditions. So that put them more at risk. These are, these numbers are skewed a little bit because now they're allowing the states to test on their own. And so those, those states have maybe not turned in all their, their numbers. Or sometimes it can take anywhere from 22 to 7, 24 to 72 hours for those tests to come in. So of course, like I said, they're changing daily. The CDC does have links with information for your healthcare providers, your schools, your businesses. Here's one flyer that they've put out. And of course, this was from last Monday, so it's already changed. But there's just lots of helpful information on, on the CDC website. Or the EPI, the North Carolina State EPI website is, is good as, it's good information as well. Next slide. So your symptoms, what are your symptoms? They're going to be close to the flu. You're going to have fever, cough, shortness of breath. And most of the deaths are coming from pneumonia. It goes straight to the respiratory system. So how, how are you going to protect yourself? We're really wanting people to avoid exposure. So what does that mean? It means if you're sick, stay home. And that's hard to do. There's lots of guidance coming down. Industries, they have strict absentee policies. And they're really trying to talk to some of these businesses and say, maybe, maybe come down on that a little bit to where people would stay home, keep your kids home from school if they're sick. But you know, if, if you're the only person working and you have, you're living check to check, it's hard. Or, or you don't get sick time. See, a lot of us get sick time. They don't get sick time. They get demerits or whatever they call that. They're going to go to work sick. And so the government's really trying to give guidance on, easing up on some of those policies, you know, until, until this starts coming down. Definitely cover your mouth while coughing or sneezing. We've been trying to teach people to cough into their elbow. If you use a tissue, teaching those children, hey, when you blow your nose, throw that away. And then wash your hands right after. I think that's some of the things that don't happen. Of course, they use tissue, but then they throw it away and then they touch other things. So we met with the school system today and we discussed, you know, teaching those, having the teachers teach those kids as they see it happening. Hey, let's go wash our hands. Or hand sanitizer until they can get to the bathroom to wash their hands. Avoid close personal contact. You know, I know a lot of churches shake hands, probably fist bump or a wave, you know, whatever. The congregation decides. But just avoid some personal contact until some of this starts. Leanne says when the weather starts changing, it'll, it'll change. So we're hoping she's correct. But clean and disinfect frequently. And, you know, it's funny because everybody's saying this is a new virus. And it is new as far as the strain. But if you look at a Lysol bottle you've probably had at your house for a year or two, it's on the back of that. So use those disinfectants. And of course, the best mode of protection, next slide, is to wash your hands. And wash your hands, like I think you said at the very beginning, wash them for at least 20 seconds. Sing the ABC, Happy Birthday, whatever you need, you want to sing. Stand there and wash your hands with soapy water. And then use a towel to turn the, the spout off because you touched that before you washed your hands. So, next slide. There is testing and vaccine. And of course, this has changed because we were having to send everything to the state, which we would, we would send it to the state. But there, they've allowed other providers now to start testing for COVID-19. There is no vaccine and there is no antiviral treatment for it. We're pretty much are just treating the symptoms.
I think last week, didn't they, didn't they have a news conference that they were getting real close to a vaccine for it though? Real close, they're going to test, it's supposed to be, I guess it goes into testing protocol and like Code 1 or something like that?
The last I heard, the last I heard was early fall.
Yeah, yeah, they're, they're, yeah.
But they are working on it.
Right. And it'll be like a Code 1 level or something like that test procedure. So, you know, but the secret's just doing it just like you do the flu. You know, hey, wash your hands. And watch what you do.
And I meant to look it up. But in 2009, 2009, I think, we did H1N1, where we came and we did all the flu vaccines. And then like a month later, H1N1 vaccine came. And that was the new strain. It was not in the flu that year. So we had to revaccinate everybody. And I told Leanne, I said, I can see it coming now, though that's probably what's going to happen with this. But, you know, we'll do whatever we, we have to keep everybody safe. But I think it's hard, it's really hard telling right now when that'll be out.
As Bailey said, three weeks.
They did. Oh.
Amanda, I read that today.
Oh.
Scientists in Israel say three weeks they'll have a vaccination.
Females had a vaccine for animals for a long time, I think.
I've heard that too. I, I have heard that, but I, I can't find it. But I have heard that.
You and Mark had a really good program on the radio the other day explaining too, by the way. So kudos to both of y'all. Had your radio face on, it sounded good.
Just don't panic, is the thing. Be prepared, be prepared. But.
I think if you're immunocompromised or you've got health concerns, those are the, those are the patients or the people who should be more scared of this. Healthy people and children, it is not affecting. I mean, some people won't even know they're sick. They may think it's allergies. So I think we really need to look at our parents, our aging parents, or our neighbors who maybe don't have anybody else to care for them. Check on them. Make sure they're okay. But they're the ones that are dying, that 65 and older.
That's the, you know, the people in the rest home. They've probably got compromised immune systems. They've got health problems. And, and in Washington State, that's where it really hit hard. So.
And we do have a team with the Health Department. And Mark's on a weekly call with the state. We have a team at the Health Department where Mark's the, the leader of our EPI team. And we are having meetings. We're, we're definitely getting out in the community as well. We, we're on the radio. And we went to the school system today to talk to the administrators there on, on what they can do to prevent absenteeism. You know, there's no way to stop it. It's coming. It's just, we can be smart and, and prevent major, major illness, hopefully.
Anybody else? Okay. Thank you.
I have one more.
Oh.
Okay, so we are accredited. So we have to annually update our governing board on our family planning program. Our providers are Dr. Jonathan Goodnight. He is our medical director. We have a medical director. They split. Dr. Kepley sees our maternity patients. He's at a state's full. And then we have a FMP. Her name is Emily Cook. And so I wanted to come and give you an update of what our family planning the past year has looked like. And we have done a major renovation to our clinical area. We went from two rooms to five rooms. And then we have a separate room for our ultrasound and our NST and our immunization room. So now when you come for immunizations, if that's all you're coming for, you don't even have to come to the clinic area, which is great because used to, they'd have to take up one of those rooms that we could have used for a patient. So we created a teen, a teen-friendly family planning room. And a lot of people were asking me, why did we have to do that? Well, the state gives us family planning funds. And so they tell us what we have to do. And so they're wanting to reach out to that teen population and have them be in charge of their health. So if we make it more friendly for them, they'll come. So we've added one room with teen-specific education on the walls. We've put a phone, a phone charging unit in there for them. And we have bought just furniture that looks more what a teen would want to sit in, other than a regular chair. So we've really tried to vamp up our facility. To me, it really does look, it looks wonderful. I would put us up against the doctor's offices. So definitely come, come and see it. Next slide. So we saw 11, 1131 females. And I put up there how many methods we offer. Our main ones that I'm going to talk about is our LARCs. And those long-term acting contraception. And we want them to keep that there either three to five years. So on there, I put the last slide, go back one more time, just a second. I wanted you to see, we had 40, 40 IUDs or implants. And I think we only had three that actually didn't keep it. And only two of those we placed. So that means we're doing a good job of teaching those girls to keep those in there for the three to five years. Because they all, they're more expensive, but they will last longer. And they don't have to come back or have to remember to take medication by mouth that they'll forget.
What's unknown, that's what I was.
Yeah, I was getting ready to ask.
Um, hold on a second.
951 of them.
Well, I pulled these from our computer, so I don't know.
Sometimes they're in multiple. Or they're undecided when they're.
Yeah, I don't know. I'll have to look.
Well, if we had 1131 patients, that 57, 40, 59, all those numbers minus 1131, I would guess would be 951. So I'm guessing, I don't know. It looks pretty close.
Yeah, but they would have had to have chosen something. So I'm not sure what, it's something, maybe they're not clicking in the system itself. So I'll have to, I'll have to look that up. Yeah. I, I'll get back to you on that one, definitely. But I don't know. It's something with the Patagonia system that we're not probably hitting the right button. But I don't know. Okay, next slide. So this is the long-acting reversible contraception. And by reversible means, once you take it out, you can still have children. So we placed 28 IUDs, 17 were removed. Four of those were removed before the three to five-year window. So I apologize, I was off one. Only one was placed in house. So that means like Dr. Kepley, I think, did one of those. But then they came to us before the, the three to five-year window and wanted, wanted it out. And we always try to talk them into keeping it. But there's sometimes they, they just want it out. So there was two that were wanting to get pregnant after the three to five years. So they are keeping them. The reason I put that in there is that, you know, even though it's more expensive, they are keeping them longer. So they're definitely, we're, we're preventing a pregnancy. And they're 99% effective.
So what does that cost?
They're about eight or $900.
Wow.
Yeah. They're, they're expensive.
For five years?
Mm-hmm.
No.
Three to five.
Three years.
Three, three to five. There's one, one is three years. And it's a, a Marina. And then the five-year is, it's just going out of my head. It's the copper. What is it?
I think it's ESG forward.
Yeah. It's, it's got a name though. It's the copper one. But it's five years.
I mean, if they did birth control pills for five years, they would pay more than that.
Way, way more than that. But if they, if they get it, the reason that it seems expensive is because if they get it and they don't keep it for six months, then we've lost a large amount of money there. But that's, that's why I think the more we educate these girls on this type of contraception, they, they, they are keeping them longer. I would say, what, four years ago? Four years ago, they probably didn't keep them. This time, this is a good report, is that they actually, we've only had one really that we took out before the time.
Other than not getting pregnant, are there other side effects?
There will be some. With the one in the arm, you know, just like if you have any type of injection or something implanted, you're going to have some soreness from the site. After, after that little wound heals though, you shouldn't have any pain or anything. And actually, a lot of girls actually have less severe symptoms of their menstrual cycle with these than, than others. Any other questions? Well, thank you for allowing me to come.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thanks.
Thank you, Billy. And, and a big piece of that is to, to show you how much more education the Health Department's really doing. Because we've worked really hard to only place those expensive reversible contraceptions when we know the person really knows what we're doing and is invested in that timeframe. Because if it does stay that length, it is very cost-effective. But like Billy said, it's, it's those that you take out too soon. So that's wonderful data. We're very glad. So next, we'll, I'm going to talk to you about the Social Services side of life. Let me get to that. You'll see the first slide is your county memorandum of understanding. I, I think you'll enjoy this. Remember, last year was the first year that we've had to sign a memorandum with the state for the Department of Social Services. There was data sets that we had to adhere to or we would be at risk of having to pay back and lose money and funding. Well, a letter dated, and I put a copy of that letter in your packet somewhere toward the back, February 17th, 2020, Susan Osborne, Assistant Secretary for the County Operations for Human Services, somebody with a longer title than mine. No counties will be issued formal corrective action this year. So we kind of get a free pass because the state is not, the, the data sets that we're having to use to be accountable aren't accurate. There's errors and inaccurate reports. And they've not developed a dashboard. So the great news is we get a free pass. But we are still working hard on it. And it was nice to actually have the state say, you know, we didn't fulfill our responsibilities to the county. So.
There's money in the budget for that too, though, right?
Say that one more time.
Wasn't there money built into the budget for?
No.
In case there was a fine, didn't there?
In case there was a fine?
I thought we'd set aside like 30 or 50,000 dollars.
We talked about it, but we didn't.
Well, the department, I thought, I thought Social Services is in their budget.
No, you pulled it, you pulled it back out.
Because we talked about it.
We pulled it out.
Yeah. Which was smart. I'm glad you did that. Because we won't need it. See, y'all just, we're thinking ahead.
We were lucky.
Yeah.
We were lucky the state didn't have everything else party to implement the program.
You know, I'm an optimist. I can't help it. Okay. Okay. I was just glad they actually owned up and said, you know, we, because we keep saying, you know, what you're saying, their data and our data doesn't add up. And so at least they realize that. So.
You hear the same thing from everybody all the way across the state when they're talking about the same thing. You know, state implements and they're not ready and try to force the counties to do the things that they're not ready to even look at.
Yeah. It's, it's definitely challenging. All right. Now recipient eligibility Rita. You know why I say Rita grant, or audit grant? I hung up on grants. Rita Audit, Recipient Eligibility Determination Audit. That's a mouthful. The vision of that is to ensure that the benefits provided only to those individuals eligible for Medicaid and North Carolina Health Choice benefits, which is what we want to do. We want to follow all the rules and regs. Our audit, I told you last meeting, started January. And I won't bore you every month. But I did want to let you know how it went this first month. The audit began January. The audit began January, they pulled twenty cases. It's going to go on for nine more months, ten months total, twenty cases each month. We have ten active cases pulled and ten negative. I don't really like that, negative, their word, not mine. Negative means denied or terminations. Um, that's just how they're putting them in categories. Um, I wish they'd have picked a little different word, but, um, the findings this first month, we are thrilled to pieces. There, we could have been perfect, we weren't, and we really didn't expect to. These applications are so detailed, and we've got very new staff that's still learning. It's a very complex program. Um, and, and the NC, I know you've heard NC Fast, it's not NC Fast, it's, it's challenging. Doesn't do a lot of the things I wish a computer program would, like keep you from making errors. Remember, I've told you before, if, if a family has ten family members, they have to manually put in each of those members and their date of birth over and over and over. I thought that's why we had software programs to populate those things, but this program does not do that. It doesn't catch errors and say, hmm, did you transpose a number in the birthday? You can get done with that case, and it won't let you proceed, and you have to spend a day trying to figure out where one little minute error is. So it is very complicated. Um, we had two internal control errors, um, as of when I did this slide, like Billy's. You know, you're kind of a week behind. Um, but we did actually have a state conference call, and we're going to continue those each month. Some counties have chosen not to do that. We want to be very proactive, we want to know what we're not doing, we want to train our staff, we want them to understand what's coming out of these audits. So, bottom line, we had no paybacks. That's what we really worry about. If we happen to have eligibility errors, we could be liable for whatever was paid out for that whole month. So, that's the money you're talking about, you put back in case, or you were talking about it, and we didn't put back. But this is that audit that you're talking about. So the first month, no paybacks, and overall, the state was really, I mean, they kept saying, overall, y'all, you did really well. You, you know, we're really pleased. Um, that very afternoon, we pulled all the staff in and talked about our outcomes and where we made, because it did kind of, um, some of those, those two internal control errors were on the same line. So hopefully, next month, we've already done next month, so we can only fix the third month. Does that make sense? Because they actually, when we finished this one, they've actually sent us our next twenty cases for March already. So we're al- and we have five days to submit all that to them. Um, so, I'll kind of keep you updated as we go, but I want you to see where that first month came out. Um, and nextly, you'll see, um, you've already done that budget approval, but I did want you to realize, we did got, get extra block grant, oops, and I see a typo, should be grant funds. Um, and we're going to put that into salaries. We actually weren't one of the few counties that got that, due to, you gotta have some typos, don't you? Um, even after you look at it a zillion times. Um, we were one of the few counties that were seeing an increase in our adult protective services cases. That's, that's not a good thing, but it's showing that our staff is working hard and, and trying to make sure not only our children in child protective services, but our adult population is, is taken care of as well. So, um, those funds will go to help us with salaries, because all that was county money. So, we, we always look for extra money. Which brings me to the update on the Low Energy Assistance Program. I left this slide like this, because I wanted to let you know, one, one part is, after the last meeting we were at, I told you how much money, we had lots of money we hadn't spent. So we did outreach, we, I talked about it here, and it only took us six days to spend a little over a hundred thousand dollars helping people on their energy bills. So, so the need is there, and we were able to get the message out. So we expended all those funds in about six days. We've requested extra funds twice. The first month, we were not awarded. Um, but this month, as of today, um, we got ten thousand dollars. So if there, and we have a waiting list, and we have been collecting names and telling people that have called in to do the application, to call back, to check every week with us. So, if there's other people out there listening tonight that has a need, um, we're, we, we asked for three times that much, but the need was too great, and so we got a portion. We'll take whatever we can get, right? Um, and Foster and Adoption Program update. Um, you heard from the Guardian Adelatum Program, we are, um, partnering with them in lots of areas. They've been a great help to our community, to help our children. Part of that, too, is outreach for our foster parents. We have the largest foster parent class that began in February that we've had staff say as long as they can remember. Planning and outreach is well underway for a community education campaign. We're contracting for additional foster parent classes with some state incentive funds that have been underutilized. Um, those funds have to go specifically to help increase foster and adoption, and they've just kind of been sitting in our bank account for a long time. So, we're getting them out there, we're getting, hopefully, our children to permanency a lot quicker, that's our goal. And lastly, I know, because you've been here a long time, is we have completed the interviews for the Assistant DSS Director. Uh, we actually had more applications than I thought, and the interviews have went quite well. So hopefully, we'll had a, have a candidate for you very, very soon. Not soon enough for me. Um, and I've included, um, all kinds of extra stuff in the back of your packet that I thought you would like to see, like the MOU. I included the letter about the MOU for you in the back of your packet. And the funding authorizations, you'll see that other ten thousand dollars in April. We also got an extra twenty, I want to say two thousand five hundred and eighty dollars, it could be transposed. It could be twenty-eight fifty. Actually, I think that's it. Twenty-eight fifty for, um, Emergency Energy Assistance Extra Two. So, um, you know, any, anytime we have opportunities to get more funding in for our citizens, we're certainly doing that, so. Um, and lastly, I have put on there two things for a closed session due to patient privacy. We, uh, need to do some, uh, bad debt write-off, and it's related to clients. So, we'll hold that for closed session, and if you have any questions?
Leanne, just, uh, one thing. Could you give us a report, uh, at our next meeting, whenever you're here? Um, I'd like to know how many kids are aging out in foster care without being adopted, and what kind of resources we have for transitioning from foster care to being on their own? I mean, when they hit that eighteenth birthday, is it just, hey, you're, you know, kicked to the curb? Or do we have some sort of resources to help them, uh, so that they don't end up in a bad situation? Or, you know, what can we do to help them get housing, you know, go to college if that's the case, you know, that sort of thing?
I will, a- and I know we have an excellent link program that, that targets those older teens, but, um, I'll get you some concrete data and get back to you.
Okay.
But, good question. We, I know we have about fifty, the nu- there again, that's a moving target, but we have over fifty in foster care at this point. And, um, a good portion of that is the thirteen and over, so, um, you know, we, we think a lot about the babies and the small children, but last number I saw was, uh, twelve over thirteen and above. So, that's, that's a lo- and, you know, teenagers are, I have teenagers, so, you know, they're challenging.
Ms. Quest.
Yes, sir.
You know, whether it's coronavirus, or, uh, community health, or, uh, NC Fast, or low energy, or foster programs, or morale, or whatever, leadership matters. Thank you.
Thank you. We, we have dedicated staff. It's, it's not just me, it's, it's a lot of people making sure that place runs, and, um, some good supervisors. One of the things, one of the supervisors had put into place before I even got there, was cross-training for like the energy program. For one day, you may have fifty people come in wanting to do an application, and before, we only had two or three people. Well, you know, that's waiting in the lobby at, at Department of Social Services half a day. So, um, he actually cross-trained our, all, all of our economic development staff, economic services staff, to take those applications. So instead of two or three people, there's like fifteen can take those applications. And this was the second or third year, and it's improving every year, so, um, I appreciate that. But there's a lot of dedicated people that's hung in there with us while we make some improvements.
Leadership helps other leadership blossom.
Thank you.
And cross-training is one of the most vital parts of any organization.
Oh, yes.
Whether it's, no matter what organization is, the more cross-training you have, the better organization you will have, and, uh, it, it makes everybody function better, and you don't miss a step. Everybody in our office is totally cross-trained. I can walk in right now, and if, if, if my supervisor's going to be out tomorrow, I can walk in, sit down at his desk right now, and do his job, because of the way he does it, he's trained me to do it, and other people have been trained too. And you just walk in, the information's there, and you go right to work and just run right straight on with it. It's a very vital tool, and that was a good thing that, uh, the supervisor here came with up there, and we need to do more and more of it, especially in county government.
I agree.
All, what I, I was going to say is sort of some of the same things that Ben said. Uh, Leanne and I have worked together almost twenty-one years. I have a lot of respect for her, and you guys know the complexities, a lot about the complexities that she's dealing with. And I'll tell you, she doesn't stop, and I just, you know, I can't say enough good things, and I commend her. Um, this has not been easy, and it's sure not over. Um, but it's a, it's a journey, and as Marty said, she's a, she's a good captain for us, but she's doing an excellent job, and I'm telling you, we got somebody that's really fighting for us. You should feel good about it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It was, it was not an easy decision. It was not an easy decision to make, but, you know, we're glad we did. So, we knew there was going to be a hard, it was going to be difficult, but it'll get better.
We're in it for the long haul. I don't give up easy.
No, you don't.
Hard-headed, I think that's it.
That's what it is.
Leanne, that report that you were giving right there at the beginning, you know, about the number of cases that you pull each month?
Yes.
That's good information to have, and I appreciate that information. And personally, I'm almost on my own, I like to have that information each month, because it gives you some idea of where you've been, where you're at, and where you need to go. And that's very good, because those are things that will eventually cause this, if we don't get those things right. And I agree with you, I hear the same complaints when I go to these state meetings from other commissioners, and, uh, they, they complain the same thing about what you were talking about. Understand why whoever, whoever has written this program didn't do that, so it bounced right over. It's the silliest thing in the world. You can be perfect on this page, go to the next page, make one mistake, and it pops up.
And you know, it's been out there since twenty-twelve. I'm like, you know what, let's be fixing it.
It should have been fixed already, I agree.
And when they do do an update, it fixes one thing, but then we have two more that it undoes, so it's, it's, and it's kind of like Billy's report. You know, some of those reports can be really, it's, it's very complicated, because you can hit one button, and it'll throw it in that unknown or different categories. And some of it, I do think part of that is when they have multiple, like it's two, then the computer system can't figure out where to put it, so it throws it in like a little catchment area. Um, but.
We had confidence in you when we placed you in the position. We have more confidence in you now. And we're not here to micromanage, we're here to let you get the job done.
Thank you. I appreciate that confidence. I'm like, wow.
I thank you for what you're doing, and I'm hearing a lot of good reports, and I know some people that work in there. And, well, you're talking about NC Fast, my son worked Social Services for twelve years. He was one of the trainers, and we, he'd come home calling it NC Slope. So.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, and a whole lot of other issues, but I thank you for what you're doing, and your staff too. I want to thank all of them at both places, Health Department, Social Services and all, uh, for where you're taking us to, and, uh, uh, things are improving. I appreciate it.
Thank you. I have learned a lot, and I'm telling you, I'm working on that DSS budget. Wow. That's all I can say for the moment. It is, it's, it's an unbelievable database that's taken a lot of time. I thought public health's budget was semi-complicated with federal, state, local, and grants, but doesn't hold a candle to the Department of Social Services budget. It's, it's, it's not there yet, but it will be by next Monday night. The Advisory Committee is meeting next Monday to look at all three budgets before it get, comes to you, so. Um, do you know what I'll be doing this week? Or part of it, when I'm not doing COVID-nineteen, and, you know, some of that, so. But thank you, Eddie.
Um, well, we need to, uh, yeah, we're done now, so. Um, I'm going to make a motion that we go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one-four-three dash three-one-eight point eleven A, one HIPAA privacy rule, forty-five CFR, Parts one-sixty and one-sixty-four, North Carolina General Statutes one-thirty-two dash twelve, and, um, North Carolina General Statutes one-forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven A, four and six, Economic Development and Personnel. Did you get all that?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.